The time is eight thirteen P M. I would like to call this special legislative session to order. Mr. Truesdale, could you please call the roll?
Ms. Daniels. Ms. Davis.
Present.
Ms. Green.
Present.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Ms. Rolls. She's trying to talk, it's green. Mr. Rodriguez. Oh, that's on me this time. Sorry, this did again. Yep, I got you. Ms. Rolls.
Present, can you hear me?
Yeah, yep, thank you. Ms. Hill.
Present, thank you. The invocation will be led this evening by Councilwoman Davis, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Councilman Rodriguez.
Thank you, President Hill. I would like us to take a moment to honor the life of Pastor D.R. Gilmore, the second Administrative Assistant to the Pennsylvania Commonwealth Ecclesiastical Jurisdiction. He served as the Superintendent of the Harrisburg District and was the pastor of Mount Calvary Church of God in Christ. Pastor Gilmore, ninety, son of the late Roy Gilmore and the late Lottie Williams, was born in Roxborough, North Carolina. He received his Doctorate of Divinity degree from Emmanuel Baptist University of Connolly Spring, North Carolina. Pastor Gilmore transferred from this earthly life into eternal life on Thursday, September twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-five, in the UPMC Osteopathic Hospital. He was a husband, a father, a pastor, and spiritual father to many. His legacy continues through his family, his church, and the many who learned from him. Pastor Gilmore exemplified what it meant to live a life of integrity and great character, a life that was well-lived and a race well-run. Pastor Gilmore will be greatly missed by all who knew him. And the services will be held this Friday at eight o'clock A.M. through eleven A.M., and then the funeral will start at eleven A.M. And the location will be at Shiloh Baptist Church on Dairy Street. I would just like us to take a moment to honor him and reflect on his memory. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Davis. The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Councilman Rodriguez.
All rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Rodriguez. We do not have any communications this evening. We will open the floor again for courtesy of the floor. Just a few housekeeping notes, the same notes. Please state your name and your address for the meeting record. If you don't feel comfortable sharing your address, please share the vicinity in which you live within the city. You will have four minutes to share your comments. Mr. Truesdale has added the timer back to the screen for your reference. I'll begin to my right. Is there anyone that would like to offer public comment?
Council members, Bruce Weber, four-two-eight Bow Street. Just want to speak in favor of the legislation in front of you this evening. Obviously, the rebuild of the Broad Street Market is key towards economic development and continued revitalization of the city. And although it's been a long unwinding process, hopefully, we're finally seeing a little light after the darkness. And this is important for, you know, important legislation and for your consideration. And along those lines, I just want to bring up that I think it's also potentially a good opportunity to suggest that there may be a funding gap here, as has been discussed. It's hard to know exactly what it is, how much it is, and how big that delta may be. But the city currently does not have a credit rating and has not accessed the public debt market in about twenty-seven years, I think, at this point. And the city's ability to secure funding for any needs that currently they don't have opportunities to get from other sources such as grants or, you know, the typical revenue sources, that they really will have to use the cash that's available in the general fund of the city. I don't know what that balance is at this point, but, you know, once you use cash, it's gone. It's very hard to reclaim it. So I think there's an opportunity here to perhaps look at going back into the public market, the matching principle of assets to liabilities. The rebuild of the market is a building that will be around for thirty-plus years. When you, you know, go to the debt market, you're talking somewhere between ten to thirty years. Yes, there's a cost with interest, but that, those costs are spread out. So in theory, even though this is, takes a lot of work and there's a lot of cooperation between the administration and council to facilitate something like this, considering it has not been done in a while, it could provide a real opportunity to do two things at one time, which is both, you know, show off what can be done, you know, with the city with some imagination and creativity with the actually building of the market, and then show that the city's, you know, has the financial wherewithal to actually go back to the public market and secure a credit rating and show that, you know, its economic vibrancy is also there to be highlighted at the same time. So anyways, thank you very much for your time and good luck tonight with the vote.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to my right that would like to offer public comment? Okay, seeing and hearing no one, anyone in the middle section? Okay, seeing and hearing no one, anyone to my left? Seeing and hearing no one, we will move forward with the meeting agenda. Next, approval of minutes. We do not have any minutes for approval. Next, we have reports of committees. The sole committee report you will hear this evening will be delivered by Vice President Green on behalf of the Budget and Finance Committee on the Work Session of September twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-five.
Thank you, President Hill. I will try to be brief, but still thorough. The Budget and Finance Committee met during the Work Session of September twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five. We discussed Resolution sixty-three of two thousand twenty-five, a resolution approving the six proposed two thousand twenty-five budget reallocation related to the rebuild of the Broad Street Market Brick Building. We had a presentation from Mr. McCutcheon to go over the proposed budget reallocation. The total reallocation request for the Broad Street Market project is fourteen million, four hundred and sixteen thousand, nine hundred and twelve dollars. This estimate will cover the entire estimated cost of completing the Broad Street Market Brick Building and upgrades. The total estimated cost at this moment for the project is nineteen point twelve million dollars, according to the provided schedule. The funds for this project are being reallocated from various general revenue funds, including nine point one million dollars from the cash carryover, also known as the fund balance. In discussion, Mr. McCutcheon and the city solicitor, Mr. Neil Grover, noted that the amount received from insurance will likely increase as they go through the process of sorting out what category repairs and upgrades fall into. The solicitor also noted that this resolution is time-sensitive as the contracts cannot be signed or executed until the funds are made available to fulfill the contracts. We did request a breakdown and a presentation of the estimated cost so that the city council, as well as the public, can be informed on what the estimated work and final project for the Broad Street Market would look like. City council was provided a brief breakdown of the budget to include what items, excuse me, what items the funds requested for, as well as the estimated timelines for the work to be completed. During tonight's meeting, I will ask to open the floor for discussion to see if the administration would like to present this information that they provided to us via email, as well as any further questions from city council. The Broad Street Market is a pillar of our community, and the residents have been very vocal they want it restored and upgraded to keep its original historic charm while bringing modern amenities. With that being said, we also must be cognizant of the city's funds and understanding the overall cost and its impact on the city's short- and long-term financial stability is something that we have to evaluate. As noted last week, this is a multi-year project that will run across multiple budget years. In order for the contracts to be executed, the work, excuse me, for the contracts to be executed and the work to be started, the funds have to be made available now. With that being said, if this resolution would pass tonight, I would implore the administration to not only look for other funding sources so that we do not put a strain on the city's fund balance, but also ensure that our budget for the next two years includes intentional efforts to plus up our fund balance as we are still in a position where the city cannot borrow money for capital need improvement projects, and we don't want to put ourselves in a positions of not being able to complete necessary work in the future. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. We do not have any ordinances for first reading or ordinances for amendment, and there are no ordinances for final passage. For consideration, tonight we have Resolution sixty-three of two thousand and twenty-five. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution sixty-three, two thousand twenty-five. A resolution approving the six proposed two thousand twenty-five budget reallocation related to the rebuild of the Broad Street Market Brick Building.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion to suspend the rules for further discussion.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. I will defer to our Budget and Finance Committee Chair, Vice President Green, to lead discussion.
Thank you, President Hill. I would like to ask if there's anyone from the administration. I know we have Mr. Baker, as well as Mr. McCutcheon's here. If you would like to come and take a seat at the table and maybe go over some of the information that you sent to council over the last day or so, that kind of goes over the timeline when we're looking for the market to be completed. I know you sent some, a couple of renderings. If you just could provide any more information on the project itself, some of the things that are going to be covered, some of the upgrades we might be looking to do to the market, and what we're looking for the final project itself to look like. And Mr. McCutcheon, if you could provide some information more on the financial side. I know you gave us some information as to what the cost would cover as far as like specific materials and things like that. And if you could also give us just a brief standpoint on where the city's fund balance currently lies so that we can have that information as we're looking to dip into it. That was a lot that I asked for. I hope you guys heard all of it. It's kind of a long-winded request for the same request that I made last week. Whoever would like to start.
All right. Yes. Good evening, city council members. Thank you. Brian McCutcheon, accounting manager. Thank you, Vice President Green, for that reference, for that schedule that I distributed today as a follow-up for your request last Tuesday evening. My efforts here were to try to make it more concise and a little more a better path to follow as compared to how I presented last Tuesday with line and line after line.
Just one moment, Mr. McCutcheon. Mr. Truesdale, could you pull that up? Yes. Just so the public can see it as well.
I appreciate the opportunity to see my work.
So I have a printout of the construction timeline. Would that be beneficial to pass out to you guys right now, or is digital copy sufficient?
It'd be beneficial to print, give us to print a copy. I did print a copy myself, but.
Oh, all right, very good. So this, this schedule, it reflects, and it does tie into the the six budget reallocation proposed last week. The totals do reconcile. But what I was trying to illustrate here is a history of what's been paid through the end of August of twenty-five. You can see the column B reflects what we've paid in twenty-four, including the project construction manager and the architect. And there were firms contracted to do, for the most part, these are, these firms did demolition-type work. In two thousand twenty-five, payments through, into two thousand twenty-five, through the end of August, mainly, it really is only going to be the project manager and the architect. So as of the end of August, we still have commitments or encumbrance balance, balances that are out there. And the anticipation is that they will be liquidated prior to the end of the year. That's, that's an assumption, but it's a reasonable one. So prior to the heavy, I'll call them the heavier construction costs that are, that are being currently worked upon and teeing up in our encumbrance system. And these are estimates and based on the involved lines for these heavy construction costs. So, and Jared, if you could just scroll up slightly, thank you. So again, where I left off with, you know, the three point three, three eight million relates to those vendors up above. So before we get to the construction vendors, so to speak, the, all this time that's passed, the magic number, if you will, tends to be the twenty-three-plus million in total cost for this, this particular project. So if you reduce the twenty-three million by what we've paid essentially through the end of this year, that gets us down to the nineteen six ninety-three. And then it's carved out by those lines that are illustrated there. You can see that. And so that's again, an estimate, and it's a high estimate because there's, these amounts reflect any potential contingencies that may arise. They may, they may not arise to this level, but it's, it pertains to change orders. When contractors start doing work and they go along, they discover something else needs to be addressed. So with that of nineteen point six nine three million, how do we, how does the city address that? Well, five hundred thousand dollars has already been appropriated in the host fee fund. It has not been utilized yet. So the nineteen, remaining nineteen one nine three, that's what we're saying as, as these vendors and these contracts move forward through the purchasing system of the, of the city, which essentially represents committing to encumbering the balances or encumbering the budget, the available budget. We look at what's available as of the end of August, and that's the four million, seven seventy-six. So there's where the difference between those two is that number that's, you've seen and referenced, the fourteen point four million. So that will reconcile back to the proposed reallocation schedule. That's the ask, the fourteen point four million, to increase the city's general fund budget up to the nineteen point one nine three. That's, that's, that's the only expense line that was appearing on that schedule for Broad Street Market. The rest of the lines that flow below, which are not reflected here, I didn't want to re-complicate things, is just how, what are the revenue sources that are available to accommodate such an increase in general fund budget expense? And that completes that, that schedule summarized up for you. If you have any comments or questions, I'd be happy to try to answer for you.
I don't have any questions on this schedule. Does, I'll start to my far left. No, I'll start to my far right. Councilwoman Davis.
Thank you, Vice President Green. Good evening. I'm going to hold off on my questions, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, President Hill.
Yes, I'm going to read questions from an email that was received last Wednesday following last Tuesday's council meeting. "As a longtime Harrisburg resident and taxpayer, I care deeply about the Broad Street Market and about how the city manages large public expenditures. After reviewing the six proposed two thousand and twenty-five budget reallocation adjustment that was presented to council, I was struck by how difficult it is for an ordinary citizen to follow where the money for this restoration is actually coming from and whether the sources are secured. I'm asking that you please forward the following concerns to members of city councils so they can be addressed publicly. From my reading of the spreadsheet, the amendment increases the Broad Street Market Fire Loss Restoration Budget by over fourteen million dollars. But the listed transfers in, transfers in, insurance reimbursements, and grant lines don't clearly add up to that amount. The estimated cash carryover jumps by more than nine million dollars, and one of the CDBG transfer lines even shows a negative year-to-date revenue figure. There, there also aren't subtotals or notes explaining each line, which makes it hard to tell what's confirmed versus what's anticipated. Because of that, I'm hoping council can clarify, among other things. First, how many, how exactly does the fourteen point four million dollar amendment reconcile with the transfers, grants, and reimbursements listed in the spreadsheet? Do you want to answer? I have a series of questions.
Okay. So back, back to that schedule that we reviewed last week. So the, the starting point is the fourteen million, four hundred and sixteen thousand increase to expense. The rest of the lines underneath that are all revenue increases in each one of the revenue lines within the general fund. I can go line by line if you like me to at this point.
I think that's what the request is because he noted that, yes, the, the lines clearly didn't add up to a certain amount and then that there weren't subtotals or notes explaining each line. So if you could, please.
Okay. Okay, yeah, thank you, Jared. So let me, folks, let me shift to column H, which is, I believe, the, what, what the questions are referring to, which is the proposed budget amendment request. So the expense of fourteen point four is funded by all the lines that appear below. In other words, if we would sum all the lines below the fourteen point four million, they would perfectly add up to that same number. Now, the insurance reimbursement for loss, in this year's appropriated budget, the city originally anticipated four point five million in insurance proceeds from the carrier. So this request is adding an additional one point two eight seven million to that, taking it up. And you can see what the available amount is over on column, column I. But that is the, the anticipation for an acceleration of cost, which the city's in the process right now of forwarding to the insurance carrier for reimbursement. It's not the full amount of the proceeds, but it's, it's an increase to that line from four point five million. The next line down is the, the CDBG funds managed by the Building and Housing Department. There's been a commitment of one million dollars. And there's actually, the reason for the possible confusion about what the questioner said about a negative, the city has already started to transfer money from the CDBG fund over to the general fund. If you look at column F, the, that's the actual, like what, what has actually occurred thus far this year through the end of August. Four hundred and eighteen thousand means we've already transferred from the CDBG fund into the general fund. So, but that line, you'll note in column E, there's no currently adopted budget. So it wasn't, naturally, it wasn't anticipated at the beginning of the year. So it's being requested now. We've already received, we've already transferred four hundred and eighteen thousand. The max, the currently maximum amount available for the commitment is one million dollars. So when you compare the two, the, the one million gets the budget in the system. It gets it there. And then the remaining amount in column I, it just, it just reflects that, you know. Already actual is four hundred and eighteen. The budget will, will appear at a million, so there'll be another five hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars to go before the end of the year. And, and that line is based on what the city's been paying to the architect.
Thank you. The next question is, for each transfer in line, where is the transfer out in the originating fund? And has it already been authorized by council or another governing body?
The council has not yet authorized what has been in, in the proposed column, in, in column H, for the transfers. Let me start with the Capital Projects Fund, which is eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And again, this was not in the city's original budget for two thousand twenty-five. If you, Jared, if you scroll down a little bit, right there, okay, you can see the third line down is Capital Projects Public Works. That's the transfer out. Now that's only three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. But the, the difference of, it would be four hundred and, hmm, four, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. There's two components to this. One is the city's hotel tax revenue that comes in and also the street cut revenue that is, is realized. Both of those revenue items are, are recorded and deposited to the Capital Projects Fund. But the street cut money is of a public works function and actually, the, the city's appropriation for, for this year includes the public works function side. The hotel tax money, consistent with the past, is not an appropriation because it simply comes into the Capital Projects Fund, and then we transfer it to the general fund, which is an appropriated revenue line item. So what, making, making this a shorter story, we're increasing the, the draw on hotel tax by four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which again, is, that, that particular expenditure out of the Capital Projects Fund is not included in the original budget ordinance, consistent with the past. But the three hundred and seventy-five thousand is street cut money, and again, that's in addition to what we would normally utilize. That is part of the public works function, which is included in this fund and is also included in the original budget ordinance this year. So the three, the three seventy, or, yes, the three seventy-five and, and the four fifty make up the eight and a quarter coming from the, the Capital Projects Fund. The next line down, if I may, the, the Blight Remediation Fund. Original appropriation this year was one hundred thousand dollars. That is in the budget ordinance, and that was meant to be a transfer to both Neighborhood Services and the general fund at fifty thousand. I'm sorry, one was at seventy-five thousand, the other one was at twenty-five, twenty-five K. So we're adding one hundred thousand dollars specifically for the Broad Street Market project. And you can see that, in the Blight Fund, down below under other funds, there's, there's two budget units to accommodate that, the salvage budget unit and the permit penalty. So again, you can see the, the split there. The original appropriation for, for this year is meant for something else, for Neighborhood Services and General Fund. But now we're adding one hundred thousand, fifty thousand dollars each for those particular expense lines in the Blight Fund. So that's how, and, and the transfers have yet to happen on what was originally appropriated this year for general fund and Neighborhood Services. So doing the math with the fifty thousand dollar increases on each line, you can see what ends up being available, one twenty-five and seventy-five respectively for salvage and penalty. But focusing back on Broad Street, the, the transfer out below, the two fifties, fifty K, equate to the one hundred thousand dollars coming in to the general fund from the Blight Remediation Fund. So that gets us through that row of the one hundred thousand. So, that gets us through that row of the 100,000 coming from the Blight Fund. Okay. The next line down is the State Grants Fund, and a large part of this pertains to interest income that's been generating, not direct, well, not directly from the American Rescue Plan Act funds. As you recall, that was received into the federal grants fund because it is, it is a federal-sourced grant in, in nature resource. There were payments out of that fund directly made, and then the 40-plus million dollars was transferred to the general fund as revenue replacement, which is in compliance with the, the federal treasury government or, or the Treasury portal when, when it comes to handling, managing, and classifying that activity. Then council came back, the mayor and council came back with the various economic activities, programs, initiatives that were funded in, in pieces, but then they were funded by way of transferring the money out of the general fund over to the, the grants fund, the state grants fund. My, my point on this is that money has been transferred, but a large piece of it has been sitting for an extended period as these projects unwind and, and generate resulting activity. Along the way, a significant amount of interest income has been generated within, in the grants fund. And unlike typically when it comes to interest income on federal money, you, you sometimes, more than, you, you don't have to return that money to the federal government. The city does not. That can be, that, that money is good for the city to keep, and there's also a, there's no restriction on how it gets used. So, that 1.663 million, approximately 1.3 million of it represents what we estimate the available accumulated interest income to be, that would be available to accommodate and help the Broad Street Market project. There are other state grant funding sources that represent amounts that are, that have previously been due to the general fund. In other words, there's been outlays made by the general fund where there's a grant involved, but it's a reimbursement grant. So, the city had to fund upfront and then submit to the grantor to be reimbursed, which has occurred. And then that money comes back to the grants fund, waiting to be transferred to the general fund, which, there are a few programs that that just has not happened yet, but we can do that and also call that a, a new revenue resource for current year because it's not in the original appropriation this year. That's the State Grants Fund. The next line is, is almost, it is the identical explanation. It's the federal grants fund, much, much lower. There are similar grant-related funds that are due to the general fund, again, from previous outlays made by the general fund, and, and the general fund needs to be and should be reimbursed. One of these, for the federal grants fund, I'd say about 75% of that 412,000 is comprised of a COVID-19 grant of about $161,000 that occurred. It was a, there was a match portion that came in relative to what the city had spent for the HVAC project for the public safety building. And there's another piece that involves police and, which is a federal program, alcohol, tobacco, and fire, which relates to police overtime hours that when they submit periodically, the city can be reimbursed for, for such activity. So, again, there's been a buildup of such amounts that have happened within the grant, the federal grants fund that are due back to the general fund. So, when you add all those up, the 14.4 million, less what I just went through, we're still coming up with a gap of 9.128 million. And this relates back to, the city has to reevaluate, not reevaluate, but evaluate its cash position to see what the potential is, what the effect or impact would be. And President Hill, you, you, you mentioned about the, the current cash balance of, of the city. Through today, we, we don't have revenue posted through today, but I can, I can estimate that right now we're somewhere around between 19 million and 19.5 million. That's as of the end of, end of September in cash fund balance for the general fund.
Okay, a few more questions. Are, okay. I think you just mentioned this, but I just want to clarify. What explains the sudden $9.1 million increase in estimated cash carryover? Was there an audited surplus, a reclassification, or some other adjustment?
This is the result of not being able to produce another viable revenue source. So, those lines below the 14 million all represent just that, trying to develop or manage what is available, what can be utilized to help fund the, the budget increase. So, again, that, that's where we were as far as brainstorming, if you will, what, 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 what the potential funding sources, which include, as I mentioned, you know, a big chunk of this is CDBG, insurance earnings, it, I'm, I'm sorry, interest, interest earnings, and then the, 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 the potential insurance reimbursement. But again, it comes down to, after you've exhausted yourself on, on what are, are some solutions revenue-wise, then this is, this is what we get to as far as a, a, a bottom line gap.
Thank you. Has the additional $1.28 million in insurance reimbursement been formally awarded, or is it an estimate pending settlement?
It would, it, it would be an estimate, and it would be pending because the way it would work is, and the city's in process right now of doing, submitting information. We, we have already submitted information to the insurance carrier, and I believe they reviewed a significant amount of payments already made, and now they're, they're asking for proof of payment, cancel check images, if, if you will. The, the total estimate of insurance that we have, which kind of goes, it kind of dovetails with the total estimate of the overall project cost of over 23 million, is 11.7 million in total. And again, that's, that's an estimate. And then you can take $1 million right off the top of that because that, that $1 million is specifically meant for costs related to what the city has done to accommodate the temporary site. So, it has to be, it has to be looked upon or, or classified in that way. So, that brings us down to, say, 10.7 million that would be available in insurance proceeds. And it's also good to know or bear in mind that the city has received insurance proceeds previously, which happened in 2023. Not quite $5 million has already been received. So, if you think about, actually, I'm glad that came to mind because that is already, if, if, you, you can look at it this way, you can characterize it as already sitting in the, the city's cash fund balance. So, that increase of, of 9.1 million would, would in effect include what has already been received. You, you can view it that way.
Are this-
So, council, President, I will note that at least the questions as framed are using different terms than are used in the city's budget and, and bookkeeping process. So, for example, that's not a settlement that he just, that was just referred to in that question?
I'm just reading it.
I know you're reading them. I'm just saying, but the language of the finance office, the language of the, of the business office, the language of the law bureau will be different. And, and this is, to make apples, apples equal apples, you have to sort of get to the same vocabulary.
Okay. Well, I just have a few more questions. Are the state and federal grant transfers fully awarded and under contract now, or are they projections? Is that a clear question?
They are not awards. They are fund balance numbers. They're different funds in the city, right? So, that's where funds went into, that's the name of the city funds. I think one of the things that gets lost in translation is that when the city, for example, presents a budget every November, and you see, let's pick any line item, this is the revenue number for the next year, this is the projected expenditures, that is not all the money in that fund. That fund is a balance that is not being proposed to be spent above the number. And so, that's where, so that, so it's not the same thing as the audit of, of all the books. It's a budget, and that's why they're two different things. So, these are funds, and if you remember, the, the budget has a series of funds, just like the general fund, the host fund, the transfer fund, the state grant fund. They have numbers in them of an, of an outstanding balance that is there, which, when they're accumulated, a significant portion of them go to what is called the fund balance, you know? And Mr. McCutcheon can speak to that. So, what's really happening is you are transferring money that was not encumbered in 2025 that's in the fund balance, regardless of which category it's in, and being asked to add that to expenditures in 2025 that were not budgeted at the time the budget was adopted. It's not the money wasn't there, it's the money was not budgeted. And so, these aren't where, people are making assumptions of what the, what the, what the categories are. These aren't where waiting for this federal grant, we're waiting for a state grant. These are balances we retain in those, those fund names that are in, that have been designated for the city. So, I'm just, just, just for clarity of what they are, I mean, and I think it is hard to understand, but, but sometimes a, a label does not, is not what it sounds like.
Okay. Well, I'll just read the rest of these questions since there's different vocabulary for everyone. What is the timeline for actually receiving these funds relative to contractor bidding and construction? And what is the backup plan if some of them are delayed or denied? Why does the CDBG transfer line show a negative year-to-date revenue of negative $418,077? Is that a posting error, a reversal, or something else? Will council or staff provide subtotals showing total inflows and outflows for this amendment so the public can see that it balances? Can each line be accompanied by a brief note or supporting document, grant award letters, insurance payout confirmations, inter-fund transfer authorizations, council resolutions so citizens can verify that the revenue is real? If any of the listed sources are contingent or speculative, which ones are guaranteed and which ones are not? Finally, what oversight mechanisms will ensure that once these funds are transferred, they are spent solely on the Broad Street Market restoration as described? These questions all stem directly from the figures in the spreadsheet, which you all can see. I'm not opposing the restoration project. I want it to succeed. But I believe transparency on the funding sources will build public trust and help council make the most responsible decision. Thank you for helping to provide clarity on this important budget matter. I don't have any other questions for Mr. McCutcheon.
Thank you. Councilwoman Rawls, any questions?
Good evening. I don't have any questions. Mine were all the same as President Hill's questions were. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Rodriguez, any questions for Mr. McCutcheon?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for joining us, Director Baker, Mr. McCutcheon. Mr. Bryan, you had said the $500,000 initially, that appropriation, where did that come from again?
That would be, Councilman Rodriguez, I think you're referring to what's already been appropriated out of the host fee, host municipalities' fee fund.
And then the 375, that came from the street cut money, correct?
Oh. Yes, 375 would be additional street cut funds, and then the other piece to that out of the Capital Projects Fund is the hotel tax additional draw, which would be 420, I'm, I'm sorry, $450,000, additional hotel tax money to, to draw from that fund.
Okay, all right. I, I definitely may have further questions. I'm just trying to kind of puzzle some things together, but that's all for right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Vice President Green, and thank you guys for showing up tonight. I really don't have any questions. I just want to, you know, put my stance on, on record. You know, when we first did this and we looked at this, I had a lot of questions about the money to transfer in's, the transfer outs, how everything's equaled up. And Mr. McCutcheon, you did a wonderful job of explaining to me what, what those things look like, but though for, for, for the public's clarification, even as we heard public comment from Mr. Weber tonight, my concerns are the same, and I'm very concerned about this project. This is a lot of money that's being moved with such a large gap and without any concrete way that we're going to see this money come back into the city. And, and, and again, we're using cash. Once this money's gone, it's gone. I'm just a little concerned. I will be voting in favor for this, but I just want to put on record what, what my stance is on it. I am very worried about seeing how, and I know a lot of things were mentioned tonight. At the end of the day, this is a lot of money going out of the city, and, and that's just my concern. So, that's all I have, no question. But if you have something to give back, that's fine.
Okay. Oh, yeah, and now, this may help, this might help. Let's just say as an example that the project would, would get completed by the end of this year. We know that's not going to happen. Project would be completed. All, no, no, no pressure, Dave. The, all the invoices would come in, they would all be paid, cash, cash out the door, okay? All the transfers would, would, would happen to come into play. What would be the end result? The city would pay 9.128 million from its cash fund balance, also assuming that the insurance money would materialize. The only, the only line on this schedule, really, that's of a, I guess, more of a, an outlying estimate would be the insurance funds because that's based on timing, and, you know, the, the city would be at the will of the insurance carrier providing the proceeds. But again, you know, the project costs, the, 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 the heavy construction costs that are already out being vetted right now are, are estimates, and they're estimated on the somewhat high end because they do include contingencies, which is always a reasonable thing to, to think about when, when you're planning cost expenditure on a project. So, is that a huge hit? Obviously, it is to, to the city's cash fund balance. It's not the norm. But one thing that we've, we've mentioned, and, and maybe I need to repeat it again, this is to, and Dave, I know, can comment more intelligently on this. This is roughly an 18-month project. You have the last quarter of this year, you have all of next year, and, and the early part of 2027. So, if you think about that, our payments aren't going to be all bunched up happening at the end of this year. It's going to be over that same timeframe. And we've, we've, we've tried to gauge that percentage-wise, and that's, that's another estimate, you know, figuring maybe, say, 40% this year to handle upfront heavier costs, 45% next year, and then maybe 15% in 2027. But that all reflects the, the cash flow. It's not all going to happen in, in, in 2025. And I think what this means then, and this comes back to budgeting for next year's budget, it's important, more important than ever now, to really, to focus on what the city's normal recurring revenue is. When you think about all the, all the regular stuff, so to speak, and you back out all the extraordinary items, whether it's, you know, interest income that's so significant from the grants fund, insurance money, and anything that's not the norm, and you use that as a, as a guide or a base to build your budget, well, now our- Well, now our budget has to be built upon, built upon what is gonna be anticipated next year for this particular project. It's not an add-on. It's, it becomes, it becomes a, a, a heart piece of, of the city's proposed budget for next year. So I, I think those are guide rails to manage our way through this and, and, and dealing with our revenues. Uh, you know, the timeline of this project, which again is, is 18 months roughly. Um, and then also to, uh, uh, build a budget that's, that reflects what, what this extraordinary event represents. And I'll, I'll stop right there if Dave wants to comment.
Just, just again, um, I understand all of that. It's not a bulk of money going out the window in one swoop. I, I, I get that. It's just the concern of it when it's coming back. Um, my question to Mr. Grover would be, um, there was a, there was a time where the, the insurance lapsed at the Broad Street Market?
Not the city's insurance. The association's insurance was lapsed at the time of the fire.
Okay.
So our insurance was always there.
How would that affect insurance revenue? I mean, money coming back?
There is no revenue anticipated from a policy that lapsed. There is no insurance from that policy that the association had. It's all the cities, the city has a bundled at the time, building insurance, which is, you ever hear like a fleet policy for vehicles? We had that for buildings. So they took the valuation of every structure we had, came to a number way back when and said, that is your coverage. Now you still have to qualify, but there's, so there's plenty of coverage, right? Plenty of coverage. It's, it's gotta qualify as bringing the building back to its condition at the time of the fire.
Yeah, before you, before you go far on, because, uh, you, I don't want you to get away from what I'm, what I'm asking.
I got you. No, just.
Um, so even though that's being said, we still have, we don't know what we're gonna receive back.
So a good faith estimate of what the additional monies will get back, and again, this is, I would, I would suggest this is in favor of the insurance company, as the city, is six and a half to seven million dollars. The business side is that we think a whole lot more of this work qualifies under the terms of that policy. So, and that's where the argument's gonna be. After you get to about six and a half million dollars, the rest of the coverage we get back is gonna be, and that's what we had brought in people at the beginning, to go through this with us, to show that it qualifies under the subparts of the policy. So that, we anticipate, I think in a minimum six and a half coming back. We're pushing for a whole lot more coming back, but there's no guarantee.
And that's, that's where I, I'm, I'm, I'm uncomfortable because we don't, we don't know where that's, if, if that's gonna happen. Being that even when some of these no-longer American rescue plan funds are spent, um, the budget's gonna drop. Our budget's gonna drop down from where it's at right now. And, and what, what monies do we have coming in that can help fill some of these things? Again, I just wanna, again, I don't wanna.
May I just in terms of, put the context to that? I think the questions then become, what historically for the last, say, five years is our average fund balance after the budget? After the budget is there, when projected revenues, what's left? How much of that is being taken here? And then what is the projection for the fund balance at the end of 2025, the end of 2026, the end of 2027? Cause that's really what's gonna tell you. It's, nothing's gonna take away the budget. What it's gonna take away is the security blanket or part of it, right? That is the number, but I think finance can answer what their estimate is. How much is that hit? And, and that's the question, right? And it doesn't mean, it doesn't mean you're not pursuing other revenue sources during that period. But I mean, that is the context. I think you see it in how much is the fund balance going from where it is, projected historically, to where will it be three years from now based on this expenditure? And I, I can't answer that question. I think that's a business office, a finance office question, a budget question.
And, and again, I'm just stating where, where I am with this and I don't want, you know, anyone to take this the wrong way, but, uh, this is just where I am. Um, I'm, I'm really concerned about this amount of money, uh, being moved around. Um, but the reason why I'm going to vote yes, because we can no longer delay this cause these costs keep rising. I see we already jumped from 14, 20 to 23. And then the longer we wait, um, but I just wanted to have that on record from, from my stance. And, um, again, thank you guys for what you do, um, but that's where I stand. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Jones. Um, I don't have any further questions. I will say that I think this, this can't be the end of a conversation, right? Um, as we're planning our budget for 2026 and 2027, as we're looking at end-of-the-year expenses, these are all conversations that we need to have, um, and look at our funds and make for sure that, as we're looking at positions being filled and as we're looking at projects to, to come into the next couple of years. Um, I know we had a, a capital project and a planning process, uh, through the finance office. Those are all things that we need to look at so that we can properly and efficiently plan for the city's needs in the future and how this Broad Street Market project affects it and impacts it. Um, so I don't think this can be the end of a conversation, if it would pass tonight, obviously. Um, it's something that we have to continue to talk about and continue to plan for. Uh, I think it's a reason why we need to have someone on the hill advocating for the city and trying to bring more funds in. Uh, we can't forget about that conversation. Uh, we can't forget about the, the support that was pledged by everyone when the fire happened. Everybody had a press conference in front of the building. Um, and so maybe it's time to start putting that pressure on and say, okay, well, the bills due. Um, you know, who's gonna step up and actually cut the check? Um, it's also reaching out to the different resources that we have, um, the different grant opportunities, just every aspect that we can, um, although we might have the money quote-unquote in the bank to cover it, uh, we can't just rely on that either. We, we can't just say, okay, well, the check's been cut, we have enough to cover it. It's easier for us to do that than to look for other revenue sources. So we have to keep having this conversation, keep moving forward. Um, so that's just my opinion on the finance side. Um, I know we'll be continuing the conversation around this time, uh, every year. We kinda start looking at how much have we underspent our budget? Um, and what we, what can we do with tho, those extra funds? Uh, we paid off the debt in the past years. We were able to, to put a large sum on that so that we didn't carry that into another calendar year. So, um, as we're coming to the end of the year, I think that's what, uh, what Solicitor Grover was kinda getting to. As we're coming to that point, we have to look at how much we have underspent our budget this year so that we'll be able to, to kinda put that on this as well and balance that out so that it's not just such a negative hit to the 19 million that we have right now in our, our, our fund balance. So I think those are all things that we have to, to think about, uh, as we're at that point, so.
Right. Um, can I comment or do you want, do you want, uh, Councilwoman Davis, do you wanna, uh, go with your questions? Oh, okay. Ju, I mean, ju, just a couple of things, um, and, and I'm not, I'm not the budget manager, all right? Okay, but you know, w, we're talking about revenue potential and, and revenue sources. And when you look at our actual activity thus far this year, there are some lines that are doing very well compared to budget. When you, when you think about our, the, the, the EIT revenue, our, our transfer tax revenue, it, you know, i- is outperforming. So in some respects, somebody would, might say, well, why don't you, you're doing so much better in, in those revenue lines, why not increase the budget in those lines?
Excuse me, Mr., Mr., you said the EIT, are you talking about that along with the LST in 47? That's, that we're using in Act 47. That, those are double numbers. I'm just asking for that EIT number.
Yeah, I, I, I can't give you a number, but I'm talking, yeah, EIT, our, our tax revenue, uh, transfer tax revenue, which is real estate, uh, related. I'm just looking at like budget to actual on some of our revenue lines. So the, the temptation might be, well, let's increase those lines to match what the actuals are. And then you can use that increase to go up on the, on, on the board here to help fund Broad Street Market. And to me, I ha, I would hesitate to go there because there are other revenue lines in the general fund, which are not as strong. So i- i- it's one of those things where, you know, you do have the, the revenue, it, it's a mixture. You have some lines that are doing quite well, some others that are not doing as well. So that's why I would, I would hesitate to, to, to focus on any two or three or four lines to help solve this as far as coming up with other revenue sources. That's, you know, we, we were looking at that, but we did not wanna go there.
And when I meant other revenue services, I meant outside revenue services.
Uh, you're sure, sure.
Not our money.
Right. Um, and then the, the, the last thing I wanna mention too, and, uh, it, it comes back to timing again and, 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 you know, not having to realize this full outlay of cash by, by the end of the year, which will not happen. But what's really happening here with the, the heavier construction costs having to, uh, materialize with the contractors, that, that the contracts have to be solidified and, and approved. And to do that, to go through, uh, the purchasing system and have, uh, full approval by, by everyone, namely the, the mayor, legal, and the controller, there needs to be budget in the system on the books. Uh, so that when the encumbrances go, when, when the commitments go out to the books looking for budget, there's gonna be budget available, uh, even though it's not a, it's not a spend. If, if, for example, if you have a million-dollar project and, you know, come the end of the year, you've spent $400,000 in cash, you still had to budget 1 million, uh, to get, to get it on the books. And then the, the 600,000 then becomes, uh, a, uh, an item for next year's budget because it's gonna roll forward into the following year. Just to, to, to explain that. Um, but that, that's, those are the only two additional items I wanted to ma, to comment on.
Councilwoman Davis, any questions?
Thank you, Vice President Green. I don't have any questions, but I want to agree with you, Mr. McCutcheon-Sin and also Solicitor Grover, that everybody's speaking a different language. And it would be nice if we could see that language, you know, with every, you have an accountant's mind, you know exactly what's going on, where money went, where it came from. You can see that, uh, Mr. McCutcheon, in your brain, but we can't see that. I can't see that. The public can't see that and it's very hard to follow. Now I have confidence in you, the, that it's real, but it would make it easier if we could actually see all the details that you just went through. If we could see it, it would make it easier to understand. And I just don't understand why we can't have something that we could see and understand, if that makes sense. It's getting late, but thank you. That's it for me.
Thank you very much. Um, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Baker. Uh, if you would have anything you'd like to, to add, especially as far as the timeline um, and the schedule that you sent us.
Good evening, Council. Um, really the only thing that I have to add is, uh, you know, what we've kinda touched base on previously. Uh, as was stated earlier, uh, this timeline is aggressive, uh, it is achievable, but it is dependent on funding. Uh, as Brian explained, if we don't have the funds in the coffers, we do not have the ability to sign the contracts to move forward. Um, unfortunately, these contracts are kinda tied to each other. We did separate into 11 different packages, uh, trying to give opportunity to as many businesses as possible. But since we did that, there are 11 different entities that have to work together, uh, to achieve the same goal. So, uh, that being said, um, i- it's kinda crucial if we're, if we're going to meet this timeline that we do move forward in, in an expedited manner. Um, if we can't, uh, move forward with our site contract, our main contractor, our masonry contractor, you name it, uh, we're not gonna be able to kinda get past a, a certain point and, and it's a pretty early stage. Uh, so that's, that's kinda the, the crucial part on my side for council to, to know and understand, uh, that a fully funded project is important for us to, um, stay anywhere close to staying on the schedule. And weather does play a factor in our construction as well, since we do have a building without an envelope sealed, uh, without a roof in certain areas. Uh, we have started demolition work. Um, there's, there's been a lot of, uh, a lot of positive input, uh, from everyone that, that we've seen around the area. Um, but, you know, it's important that we keep that going if, if, uh, possible. So that's, that's about all I have to say as far as comments go on this. You have any additional questions for me?
All right, thank you. I don't have any questions at the moment. Councilwoman Davis, any questions for Mr. Baker?
No questions.
President Hill?
Yes, I have a few questions. First, I wanna make sure that this is the updated schedule because we were sent one at, hmm, 12:44 PM today and then we received one at 3:28 PM. So I just wanted to make sure that this was the updated schedule. The consultant made a minor error on the first one that was sent.
Yes, so this should be the most up-to-date schedule. Um, I do believe that they had to, you know, this is a, a moving target. So they are updating the schedule sometimes weekly, just to keep it accurate.
Okay. Um, now you, you mentioned you have to sign contracts or you have to have the money in the coffers, but you've already started signing contracts, is that correct?
We do have some of the minor contracts that we have the existing funds for signed and they are started. But, uh, that being said, we have the demo contract signed, so we have a demolition contractor out there. But the, um, like the site contractor, they have the, uh, wall shoring in their package. Uh, so the demolition contractor can only go so far before the walls become unstable and they need to be shored up by the site contractor. So again, that's just one of many, many different, um, kind of examples on how these individual packages are all working in tandem with each other to keep the project moving forward.
Okay, and then I have one other question. I'm not sure if you can answer or somebody else can. This was a text message that I received from a resident on Friday at 6:12 PM. Just saw on the news, 14.4 million plus, then 19 million is in parentheses for the Broad Street Market. The disparity study hasn't been ratified and there is no percentage in the RFPs for diverse businesses. This may never come again. I asked about the percentage at the pre-bid and there, they said there is none. So I just wanted to clarify, is that accurate? That there are, there's no percentage, um, in the RFPs for diverse businesses?
There is not allowed to be a legally mandated one. There we, and frankly, I went to one of the meetings at the request of the mayor to emphasize the need for having both minority participation and local workers pretty vigorously, uh, that that's an issue for the council and the mayor. And got, we understand that completely from the entities that we were talking to at the time. But no, we can't mandate it and we can't mandate it without a, an approved ordinance that does it. Because the last ordinance plainly, um, fell apart under the court rulings that existed regarding the language that we had. It wasn't our case, but it was our language. We had obviously barred it from someone else and a court threw it all out. Um, frankly, in the atmosphere we're in right now nationally, it's getting harder and harder to adopt. I mean, that is the simple reality. If Harrisburg does it, they're gonna be ahead of it and in the fight, so. But mandating it, incredibly difficult as a legal matter.
Well, I'd rather be ahead of it and in a fight than just, uh, businesses missing out on this once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. I think that it's, it's unfortunate because it's something that this council, as you noted, um, well, we were blamed for holding everything up because of it. But I think that it's unfortunate that our, um, Harrisburg-based, uh, minority and women-owned businesses won't have a seat at this table. And I think that's, that's, it's just unfortunate. So thank you for your response to the constituent. I, they were supposed to come. I hope that they're listening so they could hear you. Um, I don't have any other questions.
Thank you. Councilwoman Rawls? Councilwoman Rawls, any questions or comments? We'll move on to Councilman Rodriguez. Any questions or comments?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Um, my question was answered in a somewhat format. I just wanted to know how the appropriations went for the people that are actually on the job now. I saw reports that work is already begun, but, uh, Director Baker just alluded to that, so that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Jones.
No questions.
Thank you, and once again, Councilwoman Rawls. Seeing none, uh, are there any other questions? All right. Um, I don't have any questions at the moment. Thank you very much, Mr. Baker and Mr. McCutcheon for being here tonight. Thank you for hanging in there with us. It's, um, getting later, but, uh, this was an important discussion for us to have.
I have one more question.
Yes.
Mr. Chuzel, are you able to pull up the renderings that were shared? Okay. Is he allowed to share them? Okay. Okay, I just wanted to make sure. If he's able to, I don't know.
They look a lot like the existing buildings, so they don't come up.
They do. There we go. Would anybody like to walk through, or we're just going to share each slide? Any discussion or commentary? Okay, well, Central Plaza, Central Plaza renderings. This is what?
And so with the Central Plaza, you can note that it, it looks similar to how it does now. But that entire area will have to be, I'd say, tactfully worked on underneath because it will be infrastructure. It's going to be run, new gas lines, new electric lines, higher voltages, new sewer lines, centralized grease trap. This would be the, the East End Plaza area. This, we'd, we'd propose to have somewhat of a rain garden raised area there with maybe like a small amphitheater type seating area back there and a seating area. We did pay a lot of attention to the, the needs and, and, you know, the fact that there's a school right next to, to that area. So we didn't want to put the seating too close to the roads. We wanted to keep line of sight up. We wanted to also give people, you know, the ability to use that for multi-use, whether it be for events or, you know, evening movies, you name it. We're going to keep all the clear story windows. Everything you see from the outside now will be very similar, if not exactly the same, but it will be up-to-date to, to more modern standards with much more rigidity and strength throughout the structure itself.
And for you, the seating options on Slide ten, the last slide, there's option A with a monolithic stone seating, or option B, a metal bench seating. How will that be determined?
I do believe that the mayor has determined the bench seating. We also had some different architects that weighed in on that, on the benefits of the bench compared to the monolithic stone, just as far as cleanliness, upkeep, and, you know, the comfort. Those stones are also kind of like a placeholder for an option for seating. They weren't a specific, you know, this is exactly what we're going to put here. It's more of a, they were showing an option of a possibility.
Okay. I like the bench, but thanks. Thank you, Mr. Truesdale.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments for the administration? Seeing none, ah.
I'm sorry. I don't know if you all can hear me.
We can hear you now, yes.
Okay, I, I do apologize. You know, after all these years, Zoom is just not what it needs to be. But I just, I just wanted to make a comment. I, I can, I was able to hear everything that was being said. I think my biggest concern, the market is very important to us, to our community, and I know how important it is for us to rebuild it. And it's a staple. I want it done right, and I think we all do. I think my biggest concern is the part of taking the four hundred and twelve thousand dollars out of the federal, general, or the federal fund, and correct me if I'm wrong in any of this, which was placed in there because we didn't use all of the ARPA funds, but the ARPA funds came into play from COVID, which was to help rebuild communities. Yes, I, I do understand that we're trying to rebuild the market, but I feel like that money was essential to just doing things in the community that we weren't able to do. Maybe it was better lighting, maybe it was creating even more housing for market value housing as well, and bringing back a baseball league to the city. Just, just things that were vital that we probably couldn't do. And I'm afraid of taking, my biggest concern is taking that money out. Yes, we can say this is the only time, but will it really be to the point where there's nothing left to actually do what it was meant to do? And that is my biggest concern. It's very hard to vote on this tonight, even with all the information that's being given because of that, just nervousness for me, for the residents. That's their biggest concern. That's a lot of things I heard from residents. So I just wanted to say that. I wanted to voice that concern. I wanted to say I, it's very hard to vote on this tonight. I'm, I'm worried, but I just, I don't know. That, that's my biggest concern with the money coming out of that fund, knowing what that money was essentially supposed to be used for.
May I, Ms. Madam President?
Sure.
So, so that money was not ARPA money? That is CDBG programming money? As you know, sometimes it takes five to six years that we have open programming money from CDBG block grants. So that was a million dollars that was still there in programming money that was made available for this, where we have deadlines every, and sometimes it's three years, sometimes it's five years, to get it spent. So that is the pot that it's attributable to? It's not, it's not the ARPA funds? It's where we're allowed to spend it out of infrastructure?
That, I mean, and maybe they, they, it was said today, and I didn't hear it, but last week, that's what I'm almost certain was mentioned. So I'm confused on when it changed. If I missed a conversation, I felt like I heard everything tonight. But I'm almost certain that was what was said last week.
And it's directly referenced as CDBG funds in the actual reallocation schedule?
I think Councilwoman Ross is talking about the federal grants fund that was the interest that we have materialized from.
Yes.
The, so it's, it's not actual money that was allocated for programming in the ARPA, not ARPA funds. It is interest that has accrued over time from the funds sitting unused in our bank accounts.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, I make a, do I make the motion? You make the motion? To go back into session? I make a motion to go back into session.
Sumo.
Thank you. We will now resume our special legislative session. We have before us Resolution sixty-three of two thousand and twenty-five. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record one last time?
Resolution sixty-three, twenty twenty-five, a resolution approving the six proposed twenty twenty-five budget reallocation related to the rebuild of the Broad Street Market brick building.
Thank you. Council members, are there any final questions, comments, or concerns related to Resolution sixty-five of two thousand and twenty-five?
I will just make the, the comment of, this has been a long process. It's been a couple of years since the fire at the Broad Street Market. It seems like it's been several conversations. I will say, I don't like the fact that every time it comes down, it's rushed. You know, it's kind of like, we need the money now, we need the money now, or everything's going to stop. And if City Council doesn't pass it today, the work doesn't get done tomorrow. And then the conversation always comes back from the residents or to the residents, being told that, well, the market would have been done if City Council had voted on it sooner. If the information had been gotten to us sooner, then we could have voted on it sooner, or we could have had more information. The fact that there are six people here from the public, I'm not including the media, six people here or so from the public, as much outcry as we've seen regarding the Broad Street Market at the, the different meetings, at the different conversations we've had, I think that alone shows how rushed this feels. And how discouraged a lot of residents are feeling about the Broad Street Market project to, to begin with. It was all over the news a lot today. I, I've got lots of calls and texts saying, what's going on with the Broad Street Market? I was out with my nephew this weekend, and someone came and said, I heard you guys aren't even building the Broad Street Market. Because it's just been so much delay in what's going on. Obviously, I had the conversation and corrected them on that. But I think it just kind of goes to see how the residents are starting to feel discouraged in this project itself. I think lack of clear communication plays a role in it as well. I think there should be more public update meetings, just saying, this is what's going on. This is the timeline we're looking at. It doesn't have to be that everything's perfect, but it kind of seems like it's hidden. And then people start questioning, well, then where's the money going? Why is it all of a sudden? Are we looking at nineteen million dollars when I've heard nothing for the past six months, and now it's like we need all this money? And I will say that council kind of feels, I, I won't say council, I'll say I feel that way as well, that, you know, we shouldn't have to keep constantly coming back saying, can we get an update? Can we get information? Can we get a presentation? You're asking for the money. Can you give us more of a breakdown on what the money is going to be used for? I kind of felt like last week, I shouldn't have had to ask, can we get more of a breakdown? Can we get some images? Can we get a presentation? Felt like that should have just automatically come because if you thought we were just going to rubber stamp nineteen million dollars, you've got the wrong council. So I would like to say, just as this process moves forward, one way or the other, we need more communication with council and with the public on what's going on in every aspect of the city, especially this Broad Street Market project. Because there's, there's always lots of conversation when it's time for the money to come forth. But then after, after the budget's passed, everyone gets quiet. It's kind of like, it's the administration's decision, and we don't have to talk to you about it. But when it's time for the money, it's like, okay, well, this is up to council. And if you don't pass it, then it all fails, and it's all your fault, and the residents can blame you. And that just doesn't feel fair, and it doesn't seem genuine when it comes down that way. Understand that there are lots of moving parts, but I also understand that we're paying a hefty price to a construction manager. They have time to show up and give us a presentation just the same. And so you might have other things going on. I understand, Director Baker, you have other parts of your job. But we hired a construction manager because we knew you wouldn't have the time, along with everything else on your plate, to handle this project alone. It's, it's a huge lift, and it's the reason why we thought we got all the resources we needed to make the decisions we needed. But yet and still, it comes down to the day before a special legislative session. If you don't pass this, the bills don't get paid. And it makes me want to vote against it because it feels rushed. But I wouldn't punish the residents of Harrisburg for the lack of transparency and conversation from the administration side as far as this project. So I will be voting in support of it because it's what needs to be done. But I don't feel happy about it in the process of how it's been done. So that's my long-winded comment.
No, that's fine. Are there any additional comments? I have one. As usual, with this administration, we continue to receive information at the twenty-fourth hour, forcing City Council to vote immediately on a resolution. Just today, today, Tuesday, September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five, council members received four emails regarding the Broad Street Market. The first, at eleven oh eight AM, it was a summary of the project costs, including upcoming estimated construction. The second, twelve forty-four PM, Broad Street Market Brick Building Restoration Schedule. Three twenty-eight PM, Updated Broad Street Market Brick Building Restoration Schedule. That's the one where the consultant made a minor error to the schedule. And then one at five o'clock from Mr. Truesdale, which included again the restoration schedule, which I'm not sure if it was the first one or the second one, and then the renderings that you just saw that were dated July seventh of two thousand and twenty-five. It's not fair to us to constantly receive everything at the last minute. We have full-time jobs and other responsibilities. I can't even check my email on my phone if I wanted to. I have to physically be seated in front of this computer to check the email. So do you know when I saw them? I was having difficulty getting on the internet here, and I didn't, I couldn't open it until five thirty-eight PM. So it's just a lot of information to digest at the last minute, and it seems to be a recurring theme with this administration. And it's not fair to us. It's not fair to us to really be forced to make a decision. You heard tonight, there's a whole bunch of angst in this room right now amongst council members, and we're the ones that have to vote. We have to support this because if not, it's going to cost us more. The residents are going to be upset. The market will not be restored to its full glory, and it's just not fair. If I'm being completely honest, I really wanted to delay this vote a whole nother week to ensure that we had enough time to go through all of this. This, do you see this? It looks like a maze. Highlights in blue, then there's dots and dates. This is a lot to just receive right now, and you have to vote yes. It's not fair, and it's consistently a problem. The other issue that I wanted to address was the not ARPA money that transformed into general fund money. But do you know what else that money was intended to be used for? Workforce development programs, internship programs, so that we can generate our own internal workforce of city residents. It's a cycle, right? There were other things that money was intended to be used for. Instead, it's all basically now being utilized for the Broad Street Market. And we have to say yes. Community Matters Grant Program, that was the grant program for minority, community, minority-owned and women-owned businesses, a one-time grant program. Community Connection Hubs to assist, again, with workforce development, job training, skills building. So it's unfortunate, I, I mentioned at the beginning of this special legislative session that I was reluctantly starting this meeting. And I'm very much reluctantly voting yes because I have to, because contracts have already begun to be signed. I feel like that's a little premature, but it's business as usual because things have to keep moving. And I do not want Harrisburg City Council to be regarded as the stop sign for any movement with Broad Street Market. So I will be voting yes. Again, it's extremely reluctantly. And I just don't think that it's fair that this administration continues to force City Council's hand. Mr. Truesdale, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yay.
Ms. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Hill?
Yes.
Resolution sixty-three, twenty twenty-five passes by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you. The time is nine forty PM. We do not have any old business. We do not have any new business. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion second.
Thank you. We stand adjourned.